If you got it, you gotta use it.
Oh, was he there? I wondered if that would get a reaction. Just go right down and maybe you can be there for a while.
Yeah. Hmm, that's fine.
She's not afraid.
No, it is.
Is there a toll someplace as to what all the payments are ending up being?
I don't have that toll for you tonight.
That's okay, you're right. There will be, the state of Maine has already requested one, but they are, they wanna wait until we've done them all. Can you just let us know that at the next meeting? Of course, because that way you'll know how far over we're going.
That was the plan when we got to the end, I figured, but we can do where we're at, maybe a status for next one. Yeah, well, I mean, you have them in spreadsheets anyway.
Calling out down there? Are they in the panel?
Probably could not.
Probably couldn't.
Yes, I'm gonna spark a cross and you can see the shadow.
That's what I thought.
Yeah?
All right, um, huh?
Yep, five one.
Good. Oh, mean daughter, that was my pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, with your honor, your worth, your sayings, your words, your guidance, and your wisdom, and your great and justest power. Take a motion on the minutes of the sixth morning meeting.
Twenty seconds.
All in favor? Oh, okay. Any adjustments to the agenda, sir?
Uh, nothing, sir.
Okey dokey. Lois, seeing you're the public, do you have any comment?
Yes, I do. I wrote it down, so I didn't forget.
It's okay.
Did we ever way back when we put the sewers in? Uh, there was a, I thought there was a point where we were gonna put connectors in going down like number six road or any journey roads, but the thing that's in the line was gonna go in. Do we know if we did that?
I can't answer that question, Lois. I mean, I think they did, I, I can't swear to that.
Well, one did, it would be quicker. Well, cheaper to connect to the number six one. If they did it, it's gonna be better to open that line up and...
There isn't one there.
Huh?
There isn't one there.
Really?
It didn't run down number six, by the way.
No, not down it, but the...
We talked about it, probably still, you know, we probably backed all the town buildings to it, that nobody could get into that.
Well, no, but I thought maybe, I thought we were required to do it for roads, because that's important. Anyway, moving on. The, do you remember? Now, look at who I'm looking at, but anyway, do you remember?
What's the wrong time?
The way back when we first did Tiger Hill, we sent somebody that was supposed to be a genius up there. He came back and said there was a pond out on the top, uh, out behind the fir, fir, I'm gonna say the first houses coming down on the, right. Well, if you're going out, it's on the right. Anyway, and he told us, unless I didn't hear him right, that he told us if we didn't control or redirect or find some solution to the excess water when it got into that pond, we were not going to be able to stop it coming down Tiger Hill, because it had found the easiest way out is to come forward and down. I'm the only one here that can count from the looks on it, from his face, except you seem to be thinking of something.
The only, the only parts I know are for the casino.
No?
But you're talking about Tiger Hill.
You're talking about Tiger Hill, not Rabbit Valley.
What'd you say, Rabbit Valley?
No, you said Tiger Hill.
It's Tiger Hill.
Yeah.
And that's what you're talking about?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, no.
You're talking about Rabbit Valley, okay.
Yeah.
That's why I'm wondering why you're talking.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So it's Rabbit Valley.
So I wrote it down, people. Anyway, I didn't write that down. No, I did, I wrote Tiger Hill, that's why I said it wrong. I didn't. Is that just, does it click with anybody?
The ponds that I know coming down Rabbit Valley was on the right-hand side, that's according to me.
Well, you get, you need some stuff on the...
Then on the other side, you have Miracle.
Good, Miracle.
Well, it's down at the bar, it's not right.
Yeah, not up, yeah.
Oh, okay. And the other one, are we ever gonna cut the sides of the road?
Cut the sides of roads in grass or trees like you mentioned?
Nope, just, that's grown up a weed with roads.
Grass.
Roadside mowing, the roadside mowing. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what she's talking about, it's a roadside mowing.
Yeah, Jim, I mean, Jim had, we have that new tractor so that they can do it themselves, I can find out when it's on the schedule, so...
Well, because you really, you know, you're winning out of my drive, but if you get a pound, then not get creamed. It's already got creamed once, they're not doing it again, and, uh...
It drives so fast.
I'm sitting there, come and try to get out on the road, never mind. All the idiots going up and down. Okay, that's all I can think of.
Okey doke. The public safety building, nobody has turned into bits, so we're gonna go over that, correct? We're down with that for a while, some hold?
We have not received any of the quotes from the companies we reached out to, so I'll have it back on the eighteenth so that, uh, hopefully we have quotes for that night.
All right.
If you can table, that'd be great, please.
Sure. Uh, on our list of abatements here, five two, Roger Caldwell, account eighty-seven, the amount of two fourteen seventy-two.
That's supplemental.
Supplements. Yeah, I said that wrong. Wait here a motion.
Move. Second.
All those in favor? Good. Five three, uh, Michael Granier, count one eighty-eight, in the amount of seven eighty-two thirty-two.
Move.
Wait here a second.
Second.
All those in favor? Uh, five four, James Bowden Senior, account twenty-three ninety-eight, in the amount of six thousand four hundred twenty dollars and forty-eight cents. Your motion.
So move. Second.
Second. All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, has everybody got a chance to look at those, I mean, we have...
I, I was gonna promote going through them all, but I didn't know, I was probably above that.
I, I would, I'd throw out there that, uh, any of those that have the dollar amount that the assassin agent has gone over and recommends of us to approve, that we do that in a way possible.
Okay, somebody like second that? All those in favor? All righty, I take a motion.
Make a motion, we approve, uh, all the ones listed that the assassin agent recommends, uh, payment for, payment or supplemental, sorry.
Wait here a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All righty. Minute fifteen's off to the dollar round.
Five nine is at our first one.
All righty, five nine, abatement, Judith Dunn, Sheriff of Cross, account two twenty-six.
Are these guns counted?
Um, this is one of the properties that has a little of both.
Five nine.
It's a payment of forty-nine.
Yeah, five point nine, a payment forty-nine, yeah.
Wait here a motion on that?
Make a motion, we deny the request.
Wait here a second.
Second.
All those in favor of denying the request? Okay, that's five nine. Five eleven.
Maybe five two.
What's that?
It's an approval.
Oh, it's proven, okay, sorry.
I take a motion on that.
Motion to recommend denial.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Next one, I believe, is five nineteen. Let's break it a little bit. Any take on that?
Make a motion to...
Wait here a second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All favor? And the next one, I believe, is five twenty-one.
Five twenty.
Five twenty-one.
Five twenty?
Yeah.
Okay, five twenty.
Make a motion, recommend denial.
Wait here a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor? Five twenty-one. Hear a motion?
Motion to recommend denial.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Good. Five twenty-five, I believe. Take a motion.
That is supposed to be Roger, right?
Yeah.
The beans that made, excuse me.
It's Robert.
I did.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to recommend denial.
Do I hear him second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? And the next one, who's where?
Thirty-three, I think.
Five thirty-three.
Make a motion, recommend denial.
Wait here a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? And five thirty-four.
Make a motion to recommend denial.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Move. Yeah, I guess good idea, 'cause I'm very capable of it. Yeah? I think I've got them all checked off. Are you sure we've got them all?
Five nine, eleven. Fifteen, twenty, twenty-one. Twenty-five. Yep, they're just, yeah, I think.
Got them all?
I think so, yep.
All righty.
Trying to check them all.
All righty. Do we have any like man items?
Uh, couple. Uh, just wondering, uh, manager, I know the last time we had a meeting, you had mentioned about something, one of the... Have you thought about doing payroll through like a paycheck or something like that? It's kind of, I have no... I know, you probably already did it.
You asked him a question, I'm gonna wait and I'll respond to it.
If you ever checked into it, uh...
Having payroll done by an outside source?
Yeah.
Um, we have talked to some outside companies, like there's one that does that specifically for municipalities, we've talked about that a little bit. Um, my preference would be to continue doing in-house just 'cause of the detail and being able to have more control over it. I feel like it's going smoothly, so I'd like to keep doing in-house.
Is there a reason why you weren't thinking of changing?
Well, last meeting, we mentioned something about some of the...
So, um, my opinion of that is it shouldn't be done, I just wouldn't flip. Where I am, they've been outsourcing payroll for years. It's antiquated, it's not as fast, it's more efficient with the Trio module, and every, everything is so much easier with the Trio module. So, I wouldn't recommend it. And we thought, I think it's more expensive too if you outsource.
Yeah. Yes.
Unless you've got enough, so many employees that you can't do it in-house.
Yeah.
We, we, well, we, we've been doing it, we outsourced it to county, and when there's problems, it's harder to fix, it seems like.
Yeah, really.
And we've changed once and maybe changing again in the future, so...
You, you throwing some of the public safety payroll, like fire, police, that don't stick to a forty-hour work week, and that seems to throw the general business right down in the rabbit hole.
It's just a thought, I'm just...
Yeah.
And the other one is on the recreation. I've had a couple complaints, one of them's my daughter. They, her daughter's in summer camp.
Yeah.
And there's no way for them to get undercover in this hot sun. They have a dugout, but they have so many kids. So a lot of them getting... Too bad they wasn't some type of a tent or lean-to or something there.
I thought we had...
They thought they could use the pit area tables and that, and they're told they couldn't, because that's where people coming down to piss them.
Isn't, don't, isn't there that big white tent, tent that's down there?
I thought so.
There is a big tent down there with the, it's got a cover on it, uh, for activities.
Got the whole windows on the side, everything, yeah. But I'll double-check on, make sure that didn't get taken down.
They have it somewhere because I've seen pictures.
I think it was there, well, it's not like it come out of my boat, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like a twen, you know, what, twelve, thirteen by twenty-one or something?
Oh gosh, it's probably as big as this room.
Yeah.
I've never been in it, I think there is one.
Yeah.
I'll double-check though.
Okay.
Unless it's been taken down, it was there.
Yeah.
And I know there's a lot of kids, so maybe, maybe there's not enough space for them all.
And that could be.
Yeah, so maybe we need another one.
What's the, they have, how many kids?
Ninety, I think she said, on a pretty regular basis.
Yeah.
I would think, I would think you could get that many kids in that. But I don't know what else is in that tent.
I think she had picnic tables or something, you know, for them to sit. I'll, I'll look into it.
Okay, if you would, thank you.
Any other?
Okay. Guess we could have warrants, one oh-nine, one ten, one eleven, one twelve, one two three. Any way you can?
She is a public school mat.
Yeah, but...
When I got in my car at the thirtieth, I knew myself, I was ninety-seven, I picked ours.
You're a steel.
Yeah.
Huh? Oh! Do it, you're off.
Yes, yes, of course. You're a steel.
I think I've worked on it too. My sister's daughter's on one of the side.
Love them all.
Oh, God. Everything's coming in.
Anybody that's not, how do you have that? They're slightly on break.
How, just that's where... How far are you down to the request of people to ask you something?
Um, yours is, huh?
Really? As well as that, is that what you're...
Um...
New guy in charge here.
I've done the next batch and it probably, I don't work on all of them.
You tell me, you're two together.
So I'll go with those, we just found them on the computer.
Oh.
You have a good vacation, or, or forty-five?
Yes.
Yes, you?
Got a little bit warm, but yeah.
I was gonna say a little warm hiking, wasn't it?
Yes, it was. Yeah, we enjoyed the A.C. in the camper when we got back.
I bet you.
Yep. Chris Davis.
There's a couple autographs in there.
I know the lady there, she's pretty upset. She was calling me, people had, kept me placed.
Oh, we... She has a whole...
Oh, yeah.
Uh, all of them, yeah.
They're girl defined, I mean, the woman, the woman's...
Is that the way you put it, Jeffrey? Everybody's gonna sign them.
You have no idea the massive they've liked them, none.
Oh, she told me about it. She...
Yes.
That's all motion.
According to us, we're all, so... So what the board's gonna do?
This is one that's trying to, if I lost your place, then I'm hurt.
So you need to... Too bad I couldn't get places across the road, it's... That would be my...
I would allow you to...
Except for the body. Move more camera. Well, I think...
Yeah.
That was a lot, and worse than... They didn't pump it up, and then... And you would have to worry about it. She was telling me those. Still having problems with the subject here.
These are just the approvals, I believe.
Supplemental also went.
Right, those are the first two.
Yeah, I think these were all.
Hidden approval, right now.
Yeah. I'll leave them different next time, I'll throw them.
But you're not signing, you don't approve anything that was denied? Yeah, that's right, yeah.
They've been working nonstop since they moved out. Just getting things fixed.
Keeps everybody quiet, doesn't it?
Oh. Looks like when dinner's served.
You got it.
Or ice cream.
Yeah, or ice cream, most people get ice cream.
Black and white.
Hmm?
It's an ice cream, I said black and white.
Black and white ice cream.
I don't know what you're talking about, they were talking about me, but...
I thought they were talking about ice cream.
Yeah, 'cause I had, I brought ice cream when I came home.
Oh!
Well...
For a few.
Yeah, some.
Myself and the two deputy clerks out front. One of them has a hand, so...
Really? Okay. This one?
Yep.
Hung up here.
Uh-oh.
Hung up.
No, he doesn't like to share.
You would've brought them for everybody.
Oh, yeah.
Sure you would?
Yep. I'll get out it in here, it'd all melt itself.
He was gonna say...
It melted pretty good just from there to here.
Don't take long.
Would you get it, also? Would you get it, salsa?
I had, pardon, one of them had salsa, a bowl of dish, I would have never made it in at home.
The ice cream place was making a killing, I drove by there earlier, they were stacked up pretty good, so.
Seven dollars and ninety-two cents.
Okay, one minute.
Time to...
Is that the end of them?
I think so. Are they ink pen yet?
Call it.
We got halfway through them, then we're not supposed to move.
Officially in the ad service now.
Wendy's coming to check for the blue pen.
Halfway through. I don't know, yeah. Make a motion, we signed one oh-nine, one-ten, one-eleven, one-twelve, one-two-three.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? You done it?
That it? Motion to adjourn?
Do I hear a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Thank you, everybody.
Amber. Is it record, I don't know.
I mean, that's pretty good on the agenda.
It ain't bad though. It was a lot better than it was trying to do about last time we did it.
Yes, yes.
If you get a bunch out of it, that's where you gotta go another time, you know, when you get a lot of bunches, but...
We're about six so far.
Six.
Yeah, so kind of figured we'd stuff as many as she's got for you on the eighteenth and then do another big final, big final.
Yeah, yeah, so, good. We can do it.
I tried to get those, well, we got those out Wednesday, last week.
You gonna tell us to go home?
I'm gonna go and turn the thing off.
Turn the thing off? Okay, go turn the thing off.
It's a technical term, sir.